All right. I think we're gonna start this meeting. This is our work session for the the city council budget. This is pretty own. Oh, you're here one time. Thank you. He said he wasn't gonna be on, so that's not a dig on. We're gonna turn the time over to who wants to take this Jenny, you wanna handle this?
Sure, I'll do a wow, I'll do a quick overview of what we've been working on. All credit essentially for this document that you have, it's a fresh document right off the press. Goes to Jill, she has worked very diligently and spent a lot of time dedication on this tentative budget for for you, so we wanna open it up for questions in particular that you might have, we can go line by line, whatever your preference is. We'd like to excuse our public works director from this discussion, but I should be able to answer any questions you have, there are a lot of budget notes associated with the line items, so we just wanna go through any concerns or questions that you might have for our team tonight during our discussion, we can highlight a few things. Or we can again go line by line.
We looked at this yesterday and went line by line, it's different. Not totally, but it is different than when you had received previously, so if you have notes from that one you've transferred. And it looked wonderful, good for you.
So yes, thank you Mayor, the updated version has a couple of clarifying numbers on it. I should also point out that some of the changes or modifications, and Jill could be correcting if I'm wrong, are not necessarily increases in the budgets, they're moving money that we're already appropriating for those, but clarifying what that money's going to. So as we move through the pages, you can see you knows, but I'll I'll turn the time over to Jill, cause she knows this.
Where do you, where do you wanna start?
How about the revenues pay requirements?
So that first page is just the overview of everything, the second page, we have the revenues, the tax, which includes the sales tax, property tax, franchise tax, beer tax, vehicle transportation, we tried to be as conservative as we could without being too conservative. We anticipated about two, maybe three percent increase. That's hopefully we get more, which we know we need to, but that will, the property tax is only one. We, I kind of figured that would probably go up a little. If we maintain, it might be a little bit more, it just depends on what you guys wanna do with that, so we'll know more when we do our actual final. So, but.
When do we expect the verified rate to?
I talked to the county, they said that they should probably be getting it to me within the next week or two.
So we're kind of a little bit of a limbo for that happen.
Yeah. So once I get that, I can send that out to see how, to let you guys know what the rate is and what the anticipated revenue will be from it. So. The license and permits. As you can tell, the biggest one that went up is our business licensing. We anticipate about one hundred and sixty-two thousand this next budget year. We are pretty close to that right now for this budget. So that will be pretty nice for us. The building permits and plan check fees, those are anticipating with Ben Lomen and Dixon Creek starting. So those are going up and those should cover some of the expenses in the building, which we'll get to. It does cover some of the impact fees. Did you have any questions on the licenses and permits? I know. Thanks.
I was interested to see how they were coming along, you know, versus what we adopted last year. So it's a positive thing?
So far, yeah. Yep. Just so you guys know, the business licensing, we had some people upset, but most of them had no issues whatsoever, they understood why we did what we did. So.
What was the old permit fee?
So depending on what it was, it was anywhere between sixty-six dollars. That was the base, that was most of the ones that were home occupations that really wanted to license, didn't have any problems, Walmart's has gone up to, I think it was ninety-three thousand. They paid without any problems. So it was, I think I've only heard from four people out of the whole gambit.
Yeah, the one I heard from was Rogers.
Yes, Rogers. So so the intergovernmental revenue, that includes the Class C road funds, any grants that we get, the seat belt, the state that reimburses, the police officers that do those special shifts and our state liquor funds. The next is the charges for service. So we have cabin rentals. We did add one revenue source, which is our special services police. When talking with our auditors, we wanted to make things a lot clearer. So you'll find going through the budget, we've added some lines to make things more specific, more clear what the services are. So we've added that and as you can tell, that's that's gone up, our and that actually took quite a bit from our miscellaneous revenue, which you'll see down further. Where it went from a hundred thousand to forty thousand. It's because we had to split that to police that, so it's moving from that revenue to a new one.
And what, what police function will that?
So that covers records, requests. So anything that Jackie gets, our SROs checks go through there, so anything that comes for services that we provide the special security for Walmart on the holidays, all that revenue will go into that. Believe it or not, I'm pretty impressed with how much we get just flat with records. That is probably the biggest chunk out of the whole thing is records. That's pretty cool, they go through that much. The fine, fine enforcers, they're staying the same, we really just don't wanna have that be a revenue source. We'd rather just keep it the way it is. So miscellaneous revenue. As you can tell, the miscellaneous went down, it's because we created that new service for the police. Other than that, the park interest impact fee or interest or the impact went down because the amount that's in there went down, so as more money goes into it, then the interest will go up. So next year I anticipate that interest next budget, not this coming one, but in twenty-seventh, that will go up as well. Do you have any questions on anything else on this page? So for the councils but the salary and wages are going up, cause every year you guys get your increase. We do cushion that, so in case something changes. So that's gonna benefits, those have gone up because it's based on the taxes that we pay. So we pay a portion of your guys' taxes, so that's what that comes from.
Would you tell me where you're at?
So it's page three. The travel and training, we changed it to five. We didn't see as many people going to the trainings, so we just kind of, if things change, we can always have that next time. Or during the year, we need to. We do do the mayor's lunch once a month, so we kind of keep things clean, we've added that through the ten forty-one thirty to eighty. Looks cleared and clean and there's no if someone looks at the budget, they know what's going on. Overall, your guys' budget did decrease because mainly because of the travel and training. So we're saving money, that's what the green is.
I wish that travel and training in the same line item for all the departments or?
Every department has it and it's three thirty in every department.
I just wanted to give a little clarification on the entertainment and future regarding mayor's lunches, just, I don't know if the council's aware that the mayor provides a luncheon for the employees and she prepares that for these plates every month, so it's not catered in the sense that she's going, she's catering that luncheon for employees. I think it's important to note that she's putting a lot of her own effort into that luncheon.
Any questions or changes that you would like on that?
Just wondering about, I know it's but are we actually using the in front of that?
I don't think we used it at all last year, I think the year before you got us shirts, you'll see some of the council members wear, if you want some, you're more than welcome to get shirts that have that for, especially if you're going to trainings or anything like that, you need to be identified. So you could, could have one generic one for the next four years if you want, or get one every year.
Okay, it's there and available. You're good with that one, we'll move on to justice court. So the salary, that includes sixty percent of our court clerk and a hundred percent of the judge. The salaries did go up, so that is why that one went up. The benefits went down because it's covering only a percentage of our court clerk, so she's one that has multiple hats. So we have a percentage coming out of court and percentage coming out of building, she's our, she helps with permits. So we've done it that way, so it is pretty clear. Office supplies has been dropped because she doesn't use as much. The public defender and all the legal services, that's the public defender and our prosecutor, those costs have increased, so that's why that's going up.
To repay the bail.
Police. More security.
Uh, yeah, I haven't had any complaints. I've asked the judge a couple of times and he's been happy, so I can look into that again and make sure that there's no complaints, but they, they're here on time and.
Just about the judges, we just, we are not in charge of that, that's handed down.
Hey, do you have any other questions on the court? Let's go to administration.
I'm gonna get a revenue.
No, we're over there. They can use this stand up.
On administration. Most of the items have stayed the same. The salary has gone up. Our part-time did go down. But that allows for a part-time person to do business license AP. And then the salary, full-time covers Jenny, myself, Jack and Cynthia. Which again, benefits would go up because it does cover benefits and the taxes for payroll. Engineering services, the more development we have and more projects we have, the cost does go up, so that has increased. We did create a new line item for media. Or Jenny, do you wanna explain that one?
Basically in participation with grants and other funding opportunities, we have certain benchmarks that we need to meet and media or PR, things like that are part of some of those grant applications, so that money is there for us to utilize that.
Tentatively, we do have a scanner that we would like to purchase, depending on how our IT is trying to see if he can fix the one we have, so that could be on there for the final, it could be removed, depending on if you can fix it when we come. But we will have to replace our server, so that's why that equipment has gone up.
So the servers, we historically buy every five years, they have a warranty when we purchase them for three years and then we purchase the extended warranty for two more years. So our current server has meant that warranty is actually expiring or has expired, it might already expired on our current server. So we have to update that, good news is that it's transferable, we can use it, they space that we end up in. The scanner is related to updates to the Windows systems on the computers and we use a specific document storage program called DocuWare that's hosted through Les Olson and the scanner is been sort of proprietary to that software, but that's what our IT is working on now to see if he can get it to function properly with the new Windows system and DocuWare that will keep and maintain the one we have. If not, we've put some money in there because we do doc, we do all of our document storage visually.
I just think that obviously things wear out because technology moves on.
That's exactly what's happening.
So I say it because of all and we had to spend just to keep things current.
Is there anything, any questions or things that you'd like change on this one? No, so that change in the which is a full time is putting like so and all we did is we calculated everyone to have a cola and a pop and a merit, whether the merits given that the department has. Right, but it's there available. Any other question?
Well, we all the department is using the same eval method or we
We, we have specific to the department evaluation forms, but they're pretty uniform as far as, there are some specifics to the police in particular, but they are a uniform performance evaluation that we're all using.
Is it supervisor alone or just some of the employees have any input like the old three sixty?
They all have a sheet that gives input from the employee, benchmarks goals. And then there's an evaluation part for the supervisor. Any other input from department is on that?
We just, you guys just approved the additions to our one like two months ago.
Non-departmental. Computer services is increasing, one of the items that we are increasing is we're adding a couple of modules with Castell or program or to have things a little bit more clearer with our auditors, so when the maintenance kind of goes up and the cost for some of the regular maintenance will increase, so that's why that's going up. The website. Did you wanna make any comments on that one? The decrease of that.
So the main decrease on the website is we we had amended the budget in October to appropriate funds to develop the website, now we're going into a maintenance space on the the both the city's website and the police, so that was reduced down to the maintenance piece rather than the creation of
the cost of Comcast auditing services. Those have gone up. Property liability. We have our new building and so that's gonna go up, that's covered with property the insurance coverage. Animal control. That's going up, that's kind of out of our control. Sorry. Mental health. We have created a line item for that. The balls to try and pull everything out of miscellaneous, so it's very clear what we're paying for.
I'm pushing back on animal control, I realize that that's a, that's a fund that's passed on. But do we get any information of what is being used for it? Or is it a divided decision portion, simple, I understand the ratios and what they're doing there, that's not the issue. That's worth putting our whole penny into it, is there any way we can get information back and how that money is being used?
Certainly, they have quarterly meetings, they do a budget review, I believe, and their quarterly reviews, we send we now that we're sending our code enforcement officer to attend those meetings, but we can certainly pass that information on to you.
It's information, so we know where the money's coming from, because somebody's asking, well, let's try and change. Then they start to say, well, this is where we're using it, we realize I know the volunteer people are going because it's been the whatever, building that's senses a milk king situation.
So are they responsible for licensing? That's
Yes.
And they keep a revenue for that as well?
Yes.
Yes, they cover all of our services for us here.
Interesting to see how mature that comes in.
So they used to provide a document, I, I haven't seen one recently, but it would show how many animals they had rescued or returned in from each city. I'll see, we'll check, we'll reach out and see there, they just hired a new director recently.
Relinquishment were always pretty.
Yes. So we can get some of those statistics from them to inform you of what their services are, this increased. Not sure if you remember, but a number of months ago, we came to the council knowing that they were adopting a new budget, their budget is calendar year. So it was implemented in January, we anticipated that this increase was gonna go into our next fiscal budget.
I just think that pulls on what's going on, it's just helpful information when we as well as, you know, over the years we debated back and forth, what we should do. I just think it keeps, you know, it keeps a good flavor and waters the weekend and we know what's going on.
And we can follow with that. Is that a public meeting or?
I think so. Okay. Just keep going, everything else is staying the same besides that new line item. So mental health, we offer this all impact suite at the place where employees can have access to counselors. Not long term, like years, not more of. That is so.
I assumed, but I thought it's.
Yeah. Okay, moving on.
You see the, the wages are go up each year with the cost of living and the the merits. Code enforcement and the victim's advocate and hard time places, the reason that's going up so much is because we we paid for the other two out of the police budget last year. And so now that's been putting in as a kind of fight item. Of course, to be figuring up for was a seven percent increase each year, with, with what they project to go up on for the bailiffs. Medical, the same as the other ones. CSI's budget went up quite a bit this year from what we actually budgeted. Talking to Sandra down there, they said that they were compensating the CSI budget with fund balance at Leaver County. So that's why the big jump for CSI. I think they finally caught their mistake and now they're charging us for it. The tracking system is that's the officer tracking system that's required by state law to have and our power DMS. That is what we use to be our accreditation system in. So the increase is due to that tracking system which was paid for by a grant last night. Am only increased by five hundred dollars just for cost increases. Code enforcement. We added, just because now we have somebody working on, so we have the the funds in there to be able to send letters and do what he needs to, needs to do. And then the mental health for the police department, the use for responders first. And this is a new item for us, it was picked out of, added the other one, but this is also a state requirement that we provide. And everything else is staying the same.
Just so you guys know, the code enforcement was pulled from building and that fund to P, so it's not it's just been from one fund to this one. Be moving on, the building inspection and planning. Wait, what benefits went up because we moved the percentage of our workload that covers the building permits. The rest of the benefits are coming out of here. Well, that's, we have to fix it rather than having it a hundred percent coming out of court. We balanced it with the payment. The building inspections and plan checks have gone up and with anticipation of sorry, those permits coming through with Ben Lomen and Dixon Creek. Should even each other out. Everything else is maintaining. Do you have any questions on this one? So when you have a building, then you have your permit fee and then your plan check, so there's two items, building permits. Those should cover the revenue that we're anticipating with those willing to.
So it covers the inspections under review.
It covers the review time by the building official?
That's fine. That injects in the, in using can bring us a couple of people.
There was that. Next is public works to start. The wage is going up with anticipation of the cola, those types of things. The merit. Uniform that has gone up. It also covers the safety uniforms that they have to have when they do their job, benefits that went up because of the wage increase. Travel and training stay the same. The computers gone, went up or fruit tracks is what they use. Or pro tracks is what they use to want to to track all the inspections that they do. Um, with the subdivisions. And the internet to their building. So that's what that covers. Um, they are going to be getting a new. Um, truck. Which covers that amount. Um, that will go back to the. Uh, multiple. And then emergency management. They put seven thousand in there. So we can start. Making sure we have everything up to date. And then the increase with the cleaning of the city buildings is because we've added the new building. So that's where that increase has come from. So I miss anything, right?
No, the additionally, they were cleaning their own space before, and now the cleaning contractor will be cleaning the new buildings. So that's why there's a. A change in that.
Because of the bigger deal.
Yes, and. Wasn't a contracted service before and now it will be.
Hey, do you have any questions? Moving forward. In the road. Again, the sal- salary and the benefits increase. For cost of living. Um. Travel and training. That has gone up. Not much is to cover. Um. The cost for the two. Conferences and per diems to get there. The equipment has increased. It covers. Um, the truck, sprayer, roller, and other equipment that they're in need of. Um. Again, this stuff isn't gonna be every year. It's just. It's that time that they need those.
So this truck, this truck's not part of the motor pool.
This one will actually be part of the motor pool because it's part of the. General fund. It's part of the general fund, but it's covered with the V and C words. Does that make sense? Just because it says the fun can. Um. Then with the fuel is gonna. Fuel's gonna go on. So he's anticipating the increase. With that. Did you want to add anything, Danny? Unless you have questions? Any questions or concerns? Brian, you wanted yours?
For your benefits have gone up. Um, hopefully. Uh, hoping to get another full-time employee this next fiscal year. Um, the idea behind that would be would be more help in parks. And I I find him that I I've taken care of the rest. The recreation portion uh for the city for quite a few years and I found that. I I'm lacking in some areas that I should be doing director things. And so the idea behind employee will be a split. Time type scenario, maybe. You know, what the time looks like, you have the sixty forty and just with an emphasis on uh recreation coordination, coordinating. Um, to take the recreation out of that. And then when they are, when that person's not busy with recreation, they'll fill in in the parks, which we will certainly. Use it there. Season employees, um, hopefully seeking an additional seasonal employee. Um, and if we get that person in July, it'll work through September. And then next year, they will work two seasonal employees would be. Uh, April, one through September. Um. And I can just go down through every one of these, um. Yeah, so equipment, um, I kind of have 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 the numbers itemized in the notes, but. Eight thousand dollars of that twenty-five is basically annual stuff that we use for equipment. And that's when shills that they break and tires and. And, um, anything equipment wise that we need to buy, we need to, it's a lot more things like that. Twenty-two hundred dollars for a turf dieback or thirty-nine hundred dollars for a walk-in air radiator. And then ten thousand of this, uh, if you remember in the in the budget. Work session retreat, uh, we have some playground issues going on that we need to address. This is the larger portion. Of that amount is ten thousand of that twenty-five. Buildings and grounds, um. Fifty-five hundred bills to fertilizer broadly. Uh, twelve thousand to, uh, annual parts projects. Forty-two hundred for aluminum tables to, um, very flexible plastic lifetime. So we have. Nine thousand dollars, thirty, that's thirty-nine-nine is for porta potties, four porta potties April through October. And I added an additional twenty-seven hundred dollars for three porta potties October through March. I know that there's other cities that are doing something similar and they they provide porta potties through the winter months. And they just put a account of one there that keeps it from freezing. So it is added that in the event that we want to. And giving that through the winter months, which is probably a good idea. In in my opinion.
And where are those located?
So we have two in the main park, one eighty-eight, so Harrisville Park, one eighty-eight, one standard. We have one standard in the end this park and one standard at. Millennium Park, two thousand one.
This is gonna be the train, the train, right?
Or to be a cameras. I think, yeah.
That's a long-term solution to these porta potties for the summer months is to. Put our camera systems at the parks. Uh, we did recently apply for a grant. We're waiting to hear back to see if we were awarded any funding there. Uh, and otherwise we'll have to pay. Without through parking pack fees.
Much was to again remind you, Brian?
For what?
Cameras.
Oh, I I don't know what I ever saw, but I don't know.
The bid that I received most recently is about twenty-two thousand dollars for all of the parks. Um, one of the challenges that we're working through is getting internet service there. You can ask one.
The other cities are seeing the same thing still, right?
Yes, many of our neighboring cities are. We we'd love to get this. Resolution implemented as quickly as possible.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, so the next line item for me within that building two grounds would be, uh, wood chips that we need to get on rotation replacing every year, something in our park. So. Twenty-five hundred dollars for a pocket park, which is this, I didn't catch this before, but that's also one of the slurrinesses. It's the only thing in my slurriness count right now. So. Um, you know, we, this one, that would be used at both accounts, but. Community, I put two thousand dollars for a community event grill, uh, as we continue to get. It it just, things just continue to get more popular. And so I just add two thousand dollars so I can keep up with. What we feel like we need to do for the next year. And then two thousand dollars for some zero-stable part that I want to do. Um, travel and training, there's just several, um. Trains that we go to, and this includes the certified operator, CPO certification that we have to have. Um. Splash pad. Um, I explained a little bit about this at the retreat. If if I can get the invoice from the from the guy, I'll pay seven thousand dollars for the new feature that we got out of this current budget. And then we will, we still need one more feature out of the next budget, which is nine thousand dollars. So. Nine out of that six, so sixteen thousand dollars is set aside in that splash pad, nine thousand or nine thousand of that. Would only be spent on the future and we'd save the rest. It just, I'm just trying to get the invoice from the guy for the feature that we got. Uh, multiple payments and fuel office supply. Um, youth baseball and softball, seven thousand dollars of this sixteen is is an annual. Um, what I spend usually around four thousand dollars in uniforms, um. Three thousand dollars in equipment. And again, we talked about, I put five thousand dollars in there for, uh, new equipment. And have have had some. Um, disappointment, I guess we'd say, from coaches. Uh, this year on equipment. So it's definitely needed and we're due for personal equipment. Arranging your high, um. This is a fund that we pay, uh, sometimes the main city hosts our games because we don't have a facility to do it. We need to compensate them for that. Um. And then arranging your highs, uh, facility use. Out of the rest of that. Youth basketball came way down because I was able to to use the funds I already have this year to replace the jerseys we used. Next year that will go up to probably around three thousand dollars again, but this year that's where it is. Sad, the cabin. Um, out of the Grinch this year. Um, Easter egg hunt. Just increased it just a little bit, thinking about doing maybe an adult. Easter egg hunt throughout the city a couple weeks prior, somehow implementing something for adults or older kids that way. Um, ball festivals and things that were added, we'll have to have the mass gathering permit, we'll have to have additional porta potties. So that that increased a little bit. Um, everything else.
The other big one is your irrigation, secondary water. That is to cover property tax that we have to pay the county. Or the secondary water. We don't pay all the other things that normal homeowners do. We, ours is actually very minimal compared to what others would pay. Um, but that covers. That portion and we've been. Not budgeting it the way we should. So now we're fixing that.
So what Jill's talking about, that's that's about fourteen thousand dollars of that twenty-five. Um, from five hundred will be for sprinklers irrigation, that's where we did, you know, every side we gotta be taking our sprinkler. Add it from, and then four thousand of that is for new timer blocks out as far as as soon as we get. Internet to our parks, we can title to our timer box with the internet and control everything from a computer, which is. Absolutely the trend that people are going to. So that's pretty exciting to happen. Um. That probably is about it. And we'll get to the. We'll get to that first right now that.
Okay.
So that's it for me, unless you have questions.
I just have a question on this. You got salary and wages, forty-two thousand.
It's actually a three hundred twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, 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 they agree, sorry. I just don't understand why the benefits went so high comparable to. Other department. That, that's confusing to me. That's what I'm asking.
Good question. Yes, so the benefits cover all the taxes for part-time, um, the seasonal. And the full-time. One line item for all of it.
So that's why it's a big difference between.
And any full-time person, we have to budget for benefits, like medical, dental.
Yeah, yeah, for.
That doesn't, yes, that doesn't mean that they necessarily have to take it. It's it's there. We have to make sure we are portion. Pretty question, any other? So on the reserve, we're planning on using five hundred thousand. For, um. Kind of reverberating Harrisville Road, vitamin of West Harrisville Road and the seventeen fifty north project. We have to pay our portion. To meet that grant. Four mile. Um. Really, it just, it stayed the needed by some meters this year. Um, but we are still gonna have to buy some more. Not as many, so the cost has gone down. Yeah, so that would really. The bond. Working on that one. Um. It's gonna be a new fund that we're gonna see. Um. So. We have the bond payments. And then the revenue, we. This is going up just tentative. I'm looking more at it. I've got some contacts to make sure that we're gonna have this done right. We have the money to pay the bonds. But I want to make sure it's done right on paper. Does that make sense? If you want to add anything on that?
The only thing I was gonna add is that we're in a little bit of a holding pattern right now based on whether the new issuance goes through or not. So we'll finalize out this debt service. This is the creation of the debt service fund. There we will be transferring. The fund balance to pay the loan payments essentially. So this one will be. Amended for the final adoption.
Um, going to the capital projects. As of right now, we have. The West Harrisville Road and the seventy fifty north project. That will be starting. And, um, ours compound bits shop tents.
Yeah, so we're just. Bottom line and ladder room over there, uh, that are facilities for parking those. And so we're just looking to expand that. Um, yeah, that's what we're doing. Just standing events out in that parking lot a little bit, it will stall, but. So probably benefits that's a little more. It's it's me, so.
And I just clarify that as well to for parking for equipment, this is for your park.
Correct.
Not employee parking or things like that. This is just a part of our equipment.
On this one. Yeah, just on the brains. So on the grants. The federal grant, we aren't getting the money. It's a little different out. So we already got the going with one. This budget year, so it's not being shown by next budget year. That's kind of where the differences. But. Yeah, any other questions? That's a good one.
And that's a portion of the grant that we were awarded. So they gave us ninety percent of that. And just depending on the timing of the closeout on the project, it may be in the budget, which is. No, until we finish that project.
Hey, going on to sewer. Um. The revenues we projected is just over a million. And their expenditures are going to. Just be under. Ex, uh, the revenue. When that covers is our portion of our assistant director and I'll be. And that's why the costs of those have gone. Um. Another one is travel and training. Again, it's to cover. They have three, um. Conferences, that covers their per diem. Um, blue stakes. I believe the increase is for, um. In the program. I wanna say it's a program and they're using it's gonna help them. Um, track everything and get everything. Done correctly. And. Let's see, so our treatment, central Weaver has gone up. Therefore, we have to increase our. The cost that we have to pay for the treatment. We have animal maintenance that has gone up another five thousand. And. A depreciation that's a part of the schedule that we've got. Any questions or concerns on this? Moving forward. Stormwater. Um. Again, the cost for salaries have gone up. Um. The blue stakes went up for that program that they have. Engineering. Okay, I have heard, um. Some of the projects that they've got. And storm man, stormwater management has increased. Yeah. Any questions on that?
On employees.
This one has. Other it's a portion of the public works director. Their lead and one employee so if others will say two and a third. Other questions? Straight lines. Or. Bill in charge where. It's the payment to. That we. Pay bottom business sorry. To bill our utilities we pay a portion. For. Fixing a lot of our alignments so that is going up to cover that cost. The utilities we're anticipating it being the same. The work or repairs things like that we're anticipating not going up. But they are staying within their. Revenue amount. Any questions on this fund? With everything. As long as waste management things is the same. And not goes down would be wonderful. We're anticipating. Still. An increase. But. Not horrible. The total expenditures would be the six hundred thirty two thousand but we anticipate receiving eight hundred and fourteen thousand. So. Again we can still stay rather than we need to be as long as. Waste management. Managed giving a little increase but not horrible. Any question on that? This is the fund anything on general fund. Make purchase vehicles. It pulls out and then they each department pays back in. We anticipate about two hundred seventy eight coming back into the fund. We do have a couple of. Purchases. We have two police vehicles. And two public works one in the roads which will end up coming out of. The class C. But the directors vehicle truck as well. So that's where that comes from. We will be selling. One truck. From the public works and two beautiful. Questions on that? Wonderful. We we have added. The ranges for the. Each position in department. This is done every year to that way you guys can see what the ranges are. What happens is we go through. Every city with within Weaver County. To see where everyone's at to make sure that we are comfortable and not too far. Any questions on that one? And this will be in the budget every year now. Does that way you see and and but it's. And then the last is our fee scheduling. This is an easy way for. Everyone to be able to see exactly where these are and it is tied to all of our ordinances and things. The only thing that will change again is the market pack fee which you guys approved. And that will start June nine right yeah. And it's posted on the fee schedule that I will check. Any questions on that? And great timing for our budgets work session tonight I hope you're comfortable with. What we've gone through on the overview this will be as an action item in regular agenda for this evening. Looking forward to some new discussion there. Any final questions for our people?
Looks like bouncing.
And then once we get the ready. Alright, so since we've come to the end of our work session I do need a motion to close this work session. Got just about three minutes. Alright, we're gonna start our. Federal City Council welcome to all of you in the audience welcome council and staff we appreciate all being here. I'm Peter Michelle Day I'll be conducting tonight. We have an opening with relations and ceremony.
For the opportunity meeting together tonight the city council and and public. We ask your spirit to be here with us as we discuss for the agenda items and the budget the things that needed to be clarified can be clarified. So that we have. The ability to go forward and take care of our city and the needs that we have here. We're thankful again for this opportunity to have the freedom of choice and abilities to. Express. Because of those opportunities in this free land we have. We're thankful again for all we do and thankful for our blessings that we feel here. In our community in the name of Jesus Christ and I pray.
Moving on to item number three are present items which is the approval of the meeting meetings for April eighth. And April twenty ninth twenty twenty five is presented sounds like you have a chance to look at those. Any changes or recommendations? If not. I would recommend motion.
I make a recommendation with the. Approved minutes from April eighth twenty twenty five and April twenty ninth twenty twenty five. As presented.
Motion second. Motion carries thank you. Moving on to item number four which is recognition Nathan April would you come up here please? Nathan has recently resigned from the planning commission but only after serving since January of twenty seventeen on the planning. Come up here. We have your own personal copy of history of Harrisville and your name placed. Thank you Nathan. That's a lot of reading over the years thank you very much. Number five our business items. First of all we have a public hearing to hear public comments for and we're against the issuance of sales and franchise tax revenue bonds. Jenny I'm gonna turn over to you first before we open the public hearing.
Thank you mayor just a brief overview of where we're at for this public hearing in the April council meeting. The council adopted a resolution authorizing the issuance of three point five million dollar in sales and franchise tax. Bonds for the. New police department and city hall they located over on the new city road seventeen fifty north. We made the appropriate posting and waited out the thirty day contest period for that notice. And now is the time for us to take public comments related to that project.
Any clarification the council needs before we do that? Thank you Jenny. I need a motion from the council to open the public hearing.
I make a motion really to public hearing.
Alright, motion second. This is an opportunity for those in the audience that has any public have a comment about the public. About the issues of the sales and franchise tax loans. Three minutes you can introduce yourself and. I'm not seeing any movement. Alright.
Could we have a little overview of what it's about what the bonds are for?
Okay, if you're gonna speak Ling you need to come to the.
Always gonna comment on it I just wanted to give us an overview of what the bonds were before. And how long it'd be and percentage the person's gonna get that if they buy the bonds. And is that money gonna go back into the city to. To sponsor the the buildings of what we're proposing. It didn't understand what the the bonds were for and maybe I've I've missed out on one of the meetings that that was for.
Okay. Marcus we will approach and just clarify things so if Mr. Brown has some questions that.
Mark Marcus. Can talk during public hearing. Hearing for the public Marcus can ask answer any question to the council after.
Thank you appreciate that clarification. So unless there's anyone else in the audience. That wants to speak then I'll make a or have a motion to close this and then we'll turn the tide.
I'm moving close to public hearing.
I'll serve all in favor. Thank you. I cannot follow Marcus that's appropriate.
And that's a that's a great question that was brought up and just to kind of answer that and happy to answer additional questions that the council may have. But the the additional funding as you may know we originally issued bonds a couple of years ago for this project. Sales and franchise tax bonds but as the bids came back in there was a shortage we didn't have enough money to be able to complete the project. So we didn't wanna start until we were able to secure all the financing. This additional three and a half million dollars for the police station and city hall project completes that financing. It's being paid for by budget adjustments within the current budget. So as Jenny had mentioned in prior city council meeting when we adopted the parameters resolution. There's no tax impacts related to the payment of this debt service. There's just additional monies that are available within the current city's budget to make those payments. And it will basically be the 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 final piece we need so that the city can can start moving forward with the the construction of their project. To answer the second part of that question the anticipated rate. The parameter says I believe that we can go up to six and a half percent but currently we're actually looking at a rate under five percent. And that's being negotiated currently with Bank of Utah which is the holder of the other two bonds. There's some technical issues why we're not getting this out to more there's a some coverage different things that we discussed but. Thankfully Bank of Utah is willing to participate and actually giving us very aggressive rates. It's kind of all the current market volatility so. So less than five percent is our goal as far as the twenty year bond rate would be for the city. I I believe that answered most of it is there any questions from mayor council?
Do we anticipate? Taking the whole twenty years to pay this off or what kind of are we looking at as far as?
I I think based off current budgets why we're doing it this way is because we do have a little bit of coverage crunch right now. As we have the this will be the third bond so the three bonds in total or the sales and franchise tax bonds. The hope is and one of the reasons why we chose Bank of Utah with some of the other bonds is that. These will have flexible call features and so the hope will be that as rates potentially go down over the next couple of years we'll be able to refinance this. And we can use that savings to either lower the overall debt service or start shortening the term on the total bonds as well. So that may be one method but also too with it having flexible call features if there's years the city had a budget surplus. The city is more than welcome to send a check to pay additional principal amount on those bonds so. I I don't think there's a current plan to pay them off early or anything but we have flexibility to do that. Thanks.
Thank you Marcus. Alright, moving on in our agenda here have YCC presentation about Ian Greenhall. Sadie are you? Okay. Introduce yourself too.
Oh I'm Ian Greenhall I'm the mayor for the state council here in Harrisville. And I'm gonna be talking about our most recent build draft to the Central Weaver River improvement district. Alright. So. Oh me and Zay were actually able to do this a couple of years ago and there was us and one other member of the. You say council that was able to go and so this time we had much bigger crowd that was able to go. And so that last picture right before this that you guys saw was in a room saying just like this. And we learned from the staff there that this is where all the negotiating happens. Our mayor gets to go and there's from all over Weaver County get to go and they get to decide. How we're using our budget for water treatment purposes and so that was a really cool opportunity to be in there and look at that. Some of the points that we recognized while we were there was the points of. Why we have a budget and what that money is actually going towards while we're there. Is it just say that the money is going somewhere but to actually be there and see what the money is going towards. We can understand if you can see the guy in the pink shirt he's got his nose covered because of how bad it's swollen there so. I think being the second reason it's so we have empathy and passion or compassion for those that actually do these jobs. We can understand like what they're going through and. They say that. Some will get put down drains and it causes problems and we don't think it's a big deal because we don't have to suffer with it. But it actually causes more problems than what we think. Another under or another importance was the understanding of. How this actually works with our city because this isn't located in Harrisville. It's located in Marys later so it's like okay what does that have to do with Harrisville and it actually has a lot more to do with Harrisville than you think. And the last reason is just the ones understanding. How much actually goes into this operation. Why it costs what it does and how big and how important it is to our community. And so one of the highlights was we gotta see the whole process from the very beginning it took us to where all the water comes into the plant. And it just walked us through the entire loop that took us to the very end. Where we saw clean water coming out which was a really cool thing to see.
Thank you. I'm Sadie Greenhall and another one of the activities we were able to do was go to Save Kids Day at the mall. So Save Kids Day is just basically like somewhere where teens and children can go to learn more how to be safe. And there's different sponsors from our community and they just each have their booths and the kids go around with little passports. And they get stamps from each of the different like sponsor booths and if they like get enough stamps they can get a teddy bear at the end. Bird fries. And then another thing they were handing out were helmets so the first so many people that got there they got bicycle helmets. And some of the volunteers were able to help like sort those and then fit them onto the children. And make sure that everybody knew the size and some stuff. And then another job they had was like the volunteer checking booth and they would just check like help the volunteers check in. And then share like the information and tackle. And they would just check, like help the volunteers check in and then share like the information and talk about the passports so people were clear about what to do. And then another thing we did, me and my friend dressed up as Woody or Jesse and Bo Peep. And then we went around and took the pictures with the kids and just talked to them, so that was super fun.
Thank you Sadie. We need to represent Harrisville well, I appreciate you doing this. Is that it for least twice a season? Oh Liam, I didn't see him, I guess I don't know who you are, introduce yourself.
Um, I'm Liam McConner, I'm part of the U C Council Harrisville. And another one of the events we did was a Easter hunt at the Harrisville Park and. We just like, we laid out eggs and we just got to watch the kids like hunt their eggs, it was like fun, and these fun stuff too. And uh. The the nine thousand eggs. Most there was and.
Thank you Liam, it's a pleasure in front of you the council. Alright, I guess we have an additional thing to the Y C C, Jenny Andrews. Butterfly butter project?
But I don't wanna do this, you guys don't have a lot of space to look at stuff, it's a visual thing, so you need to look at it. So I think I'm really lucky that I know Elizabeth Hansen, I was able to reach out to her to see if the U C Council would be part of a project that I'm doing with a Harrisville member. I I live in Harrisville with my husband and my two elementary age kiddos. Again, I'm a graduate student at the University of Florida in Gainesville, who wins master's degree in entomology, which is the study of things with six legs. So we're talking butterflies, termites, cockroaches, bees, all things like that, probably, but no more than six legs, I don't like spiders or ticks, so. But the thing that's really neat is that I I'm really glad that Elizabeth invited or suggested that I come here, because I think it's really neat to show what's happening in our community. And I was going to contribute to the world. So with my project, I actually ran into one of our community member members, her name was Elaine Drujko. She has lived in Harrisville for forty seven years, her husband passed away in two thousand and six. And he came here mostly because he was in the air force originally. But he was a hobby butterfly and moth collector, and he was meticulous and incredible. So what I'm doing for my master's project is I'm taking his specimens, and we're estimating that there may be four to five thousand specimens. That his sweet wife Elaine has just been keeping inside their home, and he actually made all these drawers. And when you're thinking about like, what do these look like, these are pin specimens. There he again made these as well, just a really neat guy. And this takes a lot of time, not only to collect, but he also was very good with collecting data. And as a researcher, that's extremely important, the older specimen is, the more valuable it becomes, because we can gather so much information, not only locality of where the butterfly specimen or moth was found. But we can analyze it for pollution, we can see what type of pollen is on it. We can see different ebbs and flows where the populations come, and as we kind of see our environmental change. It's important for us to know what was there, like recently I've been working with somebody in California where all the fires have been happening. And it's a hobby collector that's letting us know about butterflies where in those areas before the fire happened, so that we can move forward with conservation efforts. So just to give you an example of something that the U C Council is going to help me with. George also has his pin, but then he also has specimens kept inside these little containers. And will you guys just look at them, I want you to just look at it and. Each little, each little envelope has a butterfly or moth inside of it, and then he folded it, it's in acid-free paper, so it's really important to preserving them. And he put dates and the place that he collected them, there's one in there that was collected in nineteen seventy eight. So that's a great specimen, so what the U C Council is gonna help me with is, we need to assess the collection, we will sort through them and classify them and put them into their groups. And then we will be donating them to the Natural History Museum of Utah in Salt Lake City, so that they can be taken care of for eternity. And that's a really great partnership that we're. Able to invest in here, and this is eventually what the specimens will look like, they're put into what they call glass seed envelopes. With acid-free paper behind it. And then each one of those envelopes that they are in, we will cut the data off of it and put it on the backside. Then we'll go to the museum and we'll catalog them, and it will be placed in the museum and a place that keeps them from other bugs coming and eating them. Keeps them preserved in a healthier way, and then we're going to digitize that as well, which means we will be taking photos of the actual specimen and logging all of the data. And they can scan, data is accessed by millions of researchers, all of them. Just from the Utah database that we will be logging into, so. It is that, it was a great example of how community can come together. How just as I'm associating with people in Harrisville, that this longtime resident had this amazing collection, they were able to get it donated to a great scientific. Place and to share that information will abide and will abide to honor George Drujko's collection and what he did and all that for the people into it, so.
Thank you. Can't wait to see what they do with them. Moving on to I M C, discussion possible action, to renew waste management contract, welcome lightly Alan.
First and foremost, I know most of you like government affairs, waste management, mayor, council, thank you so much for having me. First and foremost, before I dive in, normally when I come in here, I give a quick recycling update. If you don't want it, no problem, I'll skip to the other, but normally I just give a quick, you know, couple minute overview. But I'll defer to the council, you don't miss, skip straight to the other.
But I would like that, because I feel like there's a disconnect between what is happening with recycling and what isn't.
You got, so real quick, I can tell you, your efforts are going very good. I don't always say that. Right now, the industry for Utah has been ranging, so was Harrisville, around that six to eight percent diversion rate. What that means is all material that comes into the trash stream, including recycling, that portion that gets diverted. You've been that six to eight percent, right now you're trending actually eleven to twelve percent, which is great news. A lot of that is, we found other outlets. There was some mishaps at a local recycler here that, you know, I won't get into, but we found other outlets, we've been able to take it to Wasatch Integrated. And some other avenues have opened up for recyclings for that material, which has helped as well. So that's the good news on your recycling efforts is, we are seeing a very good progression forward. And what that looks like. Through those efforts, this is what it looks like just over the past month. What that equates to, I I, it's easy to take numbers and say, hey, what does that mean? And these are what it means, so. You say two hundred and forty nine mature trees this past month, forty cubic yards of landfill airspace. Sixty five thousand kilowatts of electricity, avoided fifty nine metric tons of carbon gas or emissions. And sixty one gallon, sixty one thousand gallons of water, so. It's easy to say, well gosh, ten, eleven, twelve percent doesn't seem like much, and then when you put it into numbers like that, it definitely is much more glaring. Okay, hey, there's a use behind recycling, I hear, I I present councils every week and I hear, oh, is it really getting recycled, is it all? It is, the efforts, you know, we have those outlets, we are the nation's largest recycler, so we. We also are the nation's largest landfillers, so we understand the importance of ensuring that recyclable material is being repurposed back into goods. So any questions on that, I want, I didn't want to take up a ton of time, but I wanted to at least get that in there and give you guys a an update. Questions?
Yeah, could we get that on the website?
Absolutely, so and. I will say this, and. You're amazing, I need to do a better job of sending that over, I usually, every six months I'll be like, oh, I forgot. I'll send that over, that comes out monthly, so I'll make sure that you're on that chain, so that can get populated on monthly basis, so. The good news, let's now shift into the renewal and annual rate adjustments, heard you out and clear on trash rates. I have great news as it relates to trash rates. Markets have stayed, I mean, that's, that's the best thing I can tell you, and we're starting to see. There's competition in transfer space, competition in landfills, so. Those costs are starting to finally subside, COVID, however. We're seeing that, you know, kind of recides, things are getting back to normal, we're not seeing those high increases of wages, things that nature. Recycling has stabilized, and so that's what we see for the foreseeable future in the market. So I'm happy to report this year, standard CPI, water, sewer, trash, it's five percent. We're not anticipating anything from transfer or landfill, you know, so it's, that is the good news. So we would request to do, you know, ask for the contract and extension in three years. And let me just say this, as I went through this over the past couple of weeks. I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you, I did not realize, but you're one of our longest standing cities we've had. So it's been nearly forty years, so thank you to that great partnership that we have had, it's, I think it's since nineteen eighty eight. So thank you so much for that longstanding partnership that we've had. You know, we appreciate back and forth and the partnership that we've had. And lastly, just like I said, youth councils, we love to be part of, I heard that. Please get us involved, my position with government affairs, we really like to have that, we partner with many of our cities youth councils. That's where it starts, especially on the recycling side of things, to get them out, see our facilities, see what we're doing. And if you have us in a resource, so it's great that you have that, we're also just right down the road, you know, with our own facility. So please take advantage of that, make sure that they do as well, and however we can help them now, please let us know. So I'll take a breath. Ask what questions everybody may have. You're letting me off easy, I know, I saw a bunch of people, I thought they were all coming to see me and, you know, all that, but yeah, so that's what's going on.
So this is renewal for three years. Yes, that's it.
Okay, well, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you. We will need a motion on this item.
We'll make a motion to renew waste management contract.
I'll second, the motion is second, is this roll call please? Councilor Jackson?
Yeah.
Councilor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilor Christensen?
Yes.
Councilor Bossen? Yes, Councilor Weiss.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you Blake. Adam Dean, discussion possible action, twenty twenty six tentative budget. I'll turn it over to Jenny.
Thank you mayor. I'm giving council, do, in the timeframe that we've had our other business items, do you have any? Comments, questions, or concerns about what we discussed during our budget work session? I have one item I failed to mention as we were going through that budget. We were contacted recently by the history committee, they are requesting, historically we had a history line item, help me chill, it was in the nonpartnmental, I believe. That we've put funds in for different historic projects. They are requesting a little over three thousand dollars for an monument for historic homes. That would be placed on North Harrisville Row and identify the history of the homes on both North Harrisville and West Harrisville Roads. It offers a QR code that people can. Utilize to take them to the website that describes these homes. I failed to mention that during the work session and whether you would want that added to the budget.
Where would it come from?
It would, come out of the general fund.
Okay.
And it would be added as an expenditure to the nonpartnmental.
It would be found on page six. Okay. When I was talking to Shannon who's wanting the monument in the city, I was trying to prove it. She is saying, telling me that she got one bid, I think that was this one that was, she didn't want to pay that much. Second bid that she's working on, and she's still working to try and get it over. She said if this is not possible this year, she probably could have a temporary one and go forward, so it's totally in your lap, there's some options with this, because it's come to us so late.
I haven't seen the pictures, because Jenny Ann Carstner is the one taking the pictures, so. We're all in the corner on the fence looking under camera. It's amazing, all the cataloging has been done, Jenny Ann, and she's a lot of hours into this, so QR code. You know, would be a great thing, you know, especially in the historical sense. Where these places are, I think, I just kind of can see where this technology can easily tie in to what's going on on Facebook and what's going on in your weather site. So I'm encouraging you.
I asked her to go and. You know, we're always trying to get her ass everything, I said maybe the Historical Society could help.
Yeah.
This with you, I I don't think she's, she did get some funds about three years ago, minor, she's gonna have those to it, but she. I encouraged her to go there, if this is something that has come too late for us this year, it will be another year. If we don't have something this year.
Do we have it?
Well, we are showing a fund balance currently in this projected budget until we find all these things.
I encourage you to. I know the territory marker committee encourages them.
Where'd those funds come from? I don't know.
Mostly donated.
That's what I thought.
And then the Eagle Foundry gave us a good rate on the plaque. Everything else is pretty much donated, Saunders, the city, the city paid it.
Alright, I I encouraged her to get some donations, because I thought that's what we had done before.
Did we do something on matching funds?
That's up to you guys.
You say you can't afford the three thousand, you know, matching fund fifteen hundred, she never agreed. I'm just looking at options, I saw.
We can appropriate in that fund whatever the council tells the staff to include and.
Do we have a deadline for requesting funds, or is it just, the mayor had previously told her May first, because we knew we were advancing the tentative budget this evening. But that, the information just came to me this afternoon.
Because, you know, I love history and all about history, and it is interesting, and it sounds like an all. But I don't know that it's necessary for our budget right now, especially where we're trying to appropriate funds to other places and get this building going, so. I I. Would probably say no this year, if I were just.
Any other discussion?
I think, you know, understanding is is likely, that's why I suggested, you know, if funds are available, even setting up something as a tentative. Fifteen hundred dollars, matching funds. Is something that I think easily, I think, I think city people, they can be hiding this, easily round, around maybe two thousand dollars, but. It's gonna take time, and the city has some money as a deposit or something there, that there's a fund that they're gonna use in that. I'm just thinking, I think it's, it's worth at least setting it forward and saying, yeah, we're interested in trying to help as much as we can. That's me.
Yeah, and I'm not close to saying that we need help, it just might need to be postponed for the next budget, where they missed the deadline.
Do you think we have enough information to make this? I I don't know what she gave to you as far as.
My apologies, I had it printed, and I'm not sure what happened to the printed copy, but it, it was a bid from Davis Signs. That was approximately thirty one hundred dollars, I can go print it if you'd like to. That was approximately thirty-one hundred dollars. I can go print it if you'd like to see whether, um, I believe there was. A template of what they're going to design with, they know.
I know, Danielle, I was concerned it being a high amount of money, and I don't think it. We thought through as far as the QR code and kind of each one. So I think there's some things that need to be worked out. I'm just saying this is that. Um, I want to make sure they know this is not opposed to helping alone. Whether it's this year or next year, and I understand that, yeah.
Right.
I guess I'm going through and saying, I think there needs to be a little bit more hard facts, not just. Quote on it, but more information, so we understand what's going on.
So are you saying that maybe you'd have her come with a proposal for next year, and then we can kind of work on that, help train her?
Is this something that can be adjusted as amended, if it's put in?
I, I think you'd have to do a line item. And that's money's best line action right now, if you want to amend that later on. But this is the point you stated, Brad, those ladies might not be around for another year.
Yeah, and that was, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
I don't mind doing the line item again, and then. That's my question.
Any more discussion on that? So do we have three yeses or await till next year?
I'm a yes.
I'm aware.
Your yes, your yes.
I'm a yes. I'm a wait till next year. What you guys?
I like the idea of where I'm putting at least a line on it, and then fifteen hundred.
Okay, so you do three yeses, four yeses, I'm not one of three, so the four, four yeses with a line item of fifteen hundred, okay?
I'm sure, I think they can raise. The other fifteen hundred pretty easily, if they put the word out, I think they should, there'll be enough people in the city, so I would say, yeah, that'll be okay.
I actually appreciate that, because I feel like, like you said, a precedent is, there's a lot of good causes, and I've always said. That we, we are not that place to come for people, they need to, I ask people for money a lot.
Well, I see two things here. One, I think there needs to be a line item, regardless how much is in it, that's step one. And then the opposite, some line item. I think that needs to be put in the budget. Number two, then we're discussing how much money. But, you know.
Well, if we put the line item, we can, if we have three yeses, we can put the line item in for fifteen hundred dollars.
If you agree to that.
If you agree.
I agree.
I'm a yes. Because I gotta be part of the motion.
It's not a part of, it's not a motion, it's just, we're, we're putting that in the budget right now, and then we'll agree on that budget.
Right, yeah. Because I, I think it also says precedent that even if you give somebody a hard deadline. Just because, you know, they have extenuating circumstances such as their age, we're gonna make concessions because of that. And I think we can prepare for that, I'm assuming.
Yeah, you're opening it.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that there's at least three, possibly four people that want to put a line item for fifteen hundred dollars in the budget. In the tentative budget, okay. Would you add that, please? Okay. So that's the only thing that has come up since our discussion earlier. Any other questions from the council or anything else? All right, if there's no questions, are you ready to enter any motion on this?
Make a motion that we. Accept the. Tentative budget for twenty twenty-six.
All right, now a motion in a second, Councilmember Fosse.
Yes.
Councilmember West.
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson.
Yes.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Yes.
Councilmember Jess.
Yes.
Right, budget, the tentative budget is approved. Thank you. Item E, discussion possible action to set a public hearing date for fiscal year twenty twenty-five amended budget. Jenny, would you like to take this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a formality. Anytime we're amending the budget, we're required to hold a public hearing, so this is formally. Setting a public hearing for the amended budget for the fiscal twenty twenty-five year, which is the budget we're operating on. But now, as we close out the towns and our public works project, we'll be making some budget amendments. That date would be June tenth at seven P M. For that public hearing to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-five hundred.
Thank you. Any questions? Questions? They have motions.
I'll make a motion that we accept the public hearing day of June tenth, seven P M, uh, for the twenty twenty-five amended budget.
Motion in a second, I'll make a paper.
All right.
Yeah, that motion carries, thank you. Item F, this is a discussion possible actions to adopt Harrison Resolution twenty-five dash oh three. Which is a resolution granting an electric utility franchise and general utility decent to Rocky Mountain Power. Jenny, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This, we already have a franchise agreement in place on Rocky Mountain Power that that doesn't actually expire until the fall. But uh, the Rocky Mountain Power representative, who actually lives in Harrisville now. Um, and has been a great partner on a new project, but he is just going around and requesting that cities extend our franchise agreement. So this is just extending our current agreement with Rocky Mountain Power.
Just a little bit here.
It's in, yes, I believe it's a minimum of ten years, but it might even be longer than that. Um, Brody, do you know how long the?
I thought it was.
It's, yeah.
It's usually at least a ten-year term with Rocky Mountain Power, I mean.
They're not, are there any other alternatives? That's sorry, there's twenty-five years, I think, with them, ten is probably a good. Term.
Yeah, I mean, realistically, the only way. That this isn't happening is if there was a whole shit to the state line power system, so. It could be a perpetuity, but that's illegal, so.
All right. Any more questions about? May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt Harrison Resolution twenty-five. Dash zero three, aid resolution ranking. At electric utility franchise and generally utility used to Rocky Mountain Power. Also, oh, good.
All right, uh, Councilmember Williamson.
Yes.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Yes.
Councilmember West.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse.
Yes.
Councilmember Jess.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. All right, item G, discussion possible action to adopt Harrison Resolution twenty-five dash oh four. A resolution entering an intermodal agreement for transportation funding for seven fifty west. What's the answer to that?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a formality as well. Uh, we've been issued WACOG funding for the phase one portion of. The seventy fifty Y W being portion, or project. This goes from West Harrisville Road up to our new city road seventeen fifty north. This is just accepting that agreement with WACOG. Um. But this is our statement that we submitted to WACOG for the need for the funding, and this is their award. To Harrisville City for the first phase.
Any questions on that?
This would be programmed for twenty thirty, I believe.
I do not have that question, so I don't. If you're ready, then a motion, please.
I'll make a motion, we need uh, adopt Harrison Resolution twenty-five oh four. Resolution entering an intermodal agreement and for transportation funding. Or seven thirty west. Question on the motion, is, does that include curve better than sidewalk?
Yes.
It's all seven fifty.
No, no.
No.
It's phase one of the project, it'll go from West Harrisville Road to the new city road seventeen fifty north.
Okay. I'll say. Okay, motion in a second. Uh, Councilmember Christiansen.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember West.
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Item H, discussion possible action to adopt the use of public comment cards, I'm in turn, Jen and Heather.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we received your request from several council members that we have a discussion about public comments. I'm actually gonna turn the title over to Brody, he's going to give us some background and his recommendation.
All right, thank you, Mayor Council. As I was preparing my notes for this discussion, it occurred to me, this is one of my favorite positions to be in in there. To do my job and to say things correctly, I believe everyone in the room will be annoyed at it at some point. So my apologies, but also not really. Um, there was some comment, uh, discussion about public comment, um, you know, we've had a lot of, uh. Public discussion and, and, and things, I know the council members have been approached about how we do our public comment. On that. Um. The agenda says use of public comment cards, that's how the discussion came up, um, and let's just put this out of the way. Um, obviously, I'm not elected official to make the decisions, but I would advise a hundred percent against that. Um, I don't. I weigh the risk versus rewards of that, I don't think so, I think you risk violating, um, the First Amendment by doing that, and it's just not worth it. Um, so, that being said, a couple of things. I know there's some questions of when do we do public comment? Um, and I'd just like to be very clear. There is absolutely no statutory requirement to have public comment in this meeting. Uh, I know many members of the public are not gonna wanna hear that. Public comment, quite frankly, is a courtesy to the public from this body. You do not have to have. Now. You absolutely have to have a public hearing, it will require by state statute. We do that, we've had public hearing today based on a budget issue, land you just issued, have to have public hearings, mostly in planning commission now. Public hearing and public comment are not the same. Public hearings are required at specific junctures and specific motions, uh, at specific issues. But you cannot. You cannot find a state code requirement of public comment in this meeting. School districts are a little different, there's a couple of specific things in the code, but as far as the city council means. Uh, it's not in there. Now. That being said. Pretty much every municipality has public comment. Uh, the way a six-member formal government works is that the mayor is a non-voting member of the council. And she, she is, she presides and is the chair over the meeting. So the format of the meeting is the mayor's. Uh, the council members. You, quite frankly, you can yell and scream and holler and fight, but you cannot dictate how the form of the meeting is set up. That's the mayor's responsibility under this formal government. Um. And then, just, just factually, right? I know there's a lot of persons who, I would bet a lot of money were to be here tonight. That are. That are upset of how we do meetings, because it's at the end of the meeting. Um, I've heard a lot of comments, I actually had a very spirited discussion driving through my truck one evening, about how we don't have public comment twice. So I looked. Uh, I also had chat GPT look. And there is not a city in the state of Utah I can find that schedules two public comments. Uh, that just, that isn't out there. Other cities that I work for and help with. Um, I've had very spirited discussions in the parking lot as well, because they do public comment first. So they didn't get to hear the stuff that they could public comment about. We, yeah, the other way. Um, just to be frank, there is, uh, certain cities that are limiting the total amount of public. Public comment time. Uh, because, you know, public comment can be excessive. Now. How to do it? Um, you know, I think Mayor mentioned that I hurt my back. Uh, I got bucked on the horse, and uh, like a little bit, like it, he was mad and he'd launched me into the ground. Funny thing about this horse is I've spent about six months trying to get him going and figure him out. Uh, first time I ever rode him, he, he bucked me off. Third time I rode him, he bucked me off. I spent six months, uh, having trainers ride him. Send him to chiropractor, send him to the dentist, send him to the vet. And make sure, make sure there's just, just anything I could do for this horse, and make him nice, and make him like me. And guess what happened? They'll let me on. Some horses, and I'll just say it, some people are gonna be mad. No matter what we do. So. Just think about that as we, we have this discussion. It, it, it is what it is. Um, so. What we need to be careful with public comment is you do have to have a set of rules. And I've spoken with this, the mayor, this is actually one of the issues that, um, mostly the mayor, but it could be a city council member. Where it comes from, where you do not have liability protection for violating the First Amendment. I've done my job, we've talked about First Amendment rights. So if during public comment you violate someone's rights. It's your checkbook, it's on the line, it's not the city's. And I, I wanna be crystal clear about that. There are some paces not in Utah, and they're still being challenged. Um. There is a famous one where a mayor, it's in the mid, you know, Midwest, forgive me, uh, bigger city, almost like Chicago, maybe Detroit. Uh, public comment came up, person got up and spent their entire public comment literally. Calling the mayor everything but nice. I mean, and it was vile. Mayor got mad, kicked him out, had the police officer arrested. Can't do it. City of Chicago or Detroit, wherever it is on the hook, the mayor's on foot pushing it. So how do we avoid that? Quite frankly, you do what you've been doing. You have a public comment period, you have a time limit, you have a rule structure, and then short of them. And you make everybody follow the rules. One of the things that gets people in trouble is to have a time limit. Oh, what's your name, sir?
Brian.
Brian.
Blaine.
Everyone likes Blaine, I like Blaine. We can't give Blaine four and a half minutes, because we like Blaine. Because guess what you just did? Everyone else who only got three minutes, you violated their. So the structure we have, if I were the better way, if there is something I think we could do better, I would tell you to do it. If you wanna have discussions about maybe the public comment should be first or last. Uh, the council can advise the mayor and give her opinions, but at the end of the day, it's the mayor's opinion. Um, one of the things that's. Difficult is, let's say the council during the meeting would like to have public input. There, technically, you can make a motion to call for public comment as a council member. Now, here's where it gets really tricky. The rules of order. Say. You can make that motion, but you have to make a motion to suspend the rules first. Then make a motion for public comment. And then. A super majority, i.e. four of you, have to agree to do it. So that can be done. I would tell you, however, I would personally advise you not to do it for the exact same reason. If someone had public comment and they left, and then you opened it up and Blaine got to talk to you twice, you have violated the rights of those people. So there's not really a good answer to that, um. And just public comment in general, I am not saying we don't want to listen to the public, that's what you're elected to do. But the biggest thing is, you are elected to do that. We do not function in a democracy in the United States of America. The constitutional republic, you were elected by the people of Harrisville to make the decisions. You know, I, I find it really hard in this day and age. Um. I try often. To not talk to people. And it's difficult. When you can, you can find me on. My phone, my other phone, my office phone, you can leave a message at Harrisville for when I come into Harrisville to talk to. You can email me on four or five different emails, you can find me on social media messages. Like, for someone to say that they can't communicate with you is either. It's either a lie or a. it's either a lie or a willful or uneducated official not to talk to people, which I know no one here does. So to say that we're unavailable is just inaccurate. You, you know, you guys can email, you guys, you guys get emails, you get calls. You can talk to people as long as it's only two of you and not four. You guys can have lunch every Tuesday at noon at wherever and have it open to the public. So the public input is not an issue in this day and age. And um, one of the things that I have a really hard time with is people saying you guys aren't listening. And what that translates to is you're not doing what I want specifically. And it is what it is. Um, so, with that being said, I just would like to quite frankly, encourage you guys to keep doing what you're doing. You have rules, you have a public comment period, if it should be adjusted up or down, uh, no, again, hopefully it's the mayor's decision, I know the mayor well enough, she would listen to your input if that's something that you guys wanted to discuss. But to say that there needs to be a change or anything like that, um, I would honestly recommend that you not change anything, I think Harrisville does it appropriately, does it within the rules. Um, the mayor actually does a very good job enforcing the rules, and she has a vested interest to do that. Um, yeah, I think I hit all my points. Are there any questions? Yeah.
Open application?
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. And with that, we are moving on to item number six, which is public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to approach the podium. You have three minutes, say your name, and you're gonna press it.
Yeah, I'm just making a move. Since we just had the discussion about public comment, I'd like to make the public comment, the reason suggest we need to five minutes instead of three, just to evolve us a little bit more time. Um, and starting with so. Just a suggestion, and thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to close the the time for public comments. Uh, we're moving on to Mayor's House of Follow Up. Uh, we're going to Max, we've got anyone?
Uh, item eight, will we suppose to vote on that up or down?
I'm not, the public comment, you know, we had listed discussion possible action, and we were okay, we just decided to do this, the discussion, if you want a formal.
Yeah, there's, I don't know that there's an action that.
It's for not changing.
Way of the format is like we're gonna vote, there was some, we, when we were talking about the cards, there was maybe a potential action in in approving the cards, but once I reviewed it, um, we could have more discussion if you want to, but like I said at the outset, I think that's a, that's a challenge, I'd like it that way.
Thank you.
If you could score, if we stand with comment was made in a person at five versus three.
That's still up to me, right?
I win, it's your show.
I will win. Well, I usually don't respond to public comments right now, but we're leaving it in three. We take it under advice. Going back to you, Max, do you have anything to report?
Just uh thanks for over and Steve and uh, for doing the uh, lunches, the senior lunches. I did the last two uh, two months and have the barbell helping, and they have accepted uh the challenge by the merit of just take it over, so grateful to them, uh, they're gonna do a great job.
Thanks for your help, Oliver. Uh, Robert?
Viscu Abatement last night, and I apologize, but they have a lot of information that can easily be put on the website. And so I will get that gathered in, or if you wanna give, uh, back to you, Colin, she might be able to give you a detailed file on that, but a lot of handouts and things that will really help for the center. So, you know, they, we asked for that. And of course, it is the backroom, and I live in front of the room, so I apologize on that, but no, good information. Uh, they are really very much on top of everything that's going on, going through, and uh, and really are actively working, keeping those little creatures down, so we can have enjoyable centers.
Thank you, thank you for sitting on that board. Karen?
You know, okay.
What?
I'm the real good.
Steve? Okay, I'm gonna turn over the director's chair a moment, uh, after bye.
And I'll keep you followed on the straight lines since that happened, um, if you're there to be someone with the, another big success, seeing a lot of people. Uh, nine thousand five hundred decks to do exactly, just the capital for the benefits to scatter those um, as far out as they could, and then, again, like I mentioned in the, in the budget, uh, maybe in that, um, I'd add something uh, we did old term or a teenager type or a week or two before that, maybe ice and eggs, and I can find it, uh, an obvious donation from company, like companies and stuff to young childrens and stuff like that, so you can be proud for it. Um, hopefully recreation, everything's going well there. I don't know any else.
Yes.
And we have one thing tonight, we'll be over at Orion tomorrow cooking lunch for the teachers for teacher appreciation.
Oh, nice. Okay, is that your school resource for that, for English? And then?
Well, there'll be a bunch of us over here, yeah, usually four or five of us over. Uh, Glenn with Public Works also usually goes over, he's kind of the one that started that program, schools, he likes to stay involved, so that's what we'll be tomorrow.
Great, thank you for doing that. Uh, Jenny, what have you got?
I just have a thank you to the council, um, on behalf of the staff, thank you for your support, thank you, we've brought a lot of hard decisions before the council the last several years. Um, and we appreciate you taking into consideration all the needs of the city and making those hard decisions. And I'm very proud of our staff and how hard they work and how diligent they are in their jobs, um, but I wanted to say thank you, Tima. It feels good to be supported.
I mean, that's such a great staff, right? All right, thank you. We're gonna move on to item number eight, which is a closed executive session for the purposes described in Utah Code fifty two dash four five one eight, which is a discussion of the character professional competence or physical or dental health of an individual. I need a motion to enter this closed session.
I'll move.
Also, please read the reason why we're holding those sessions, are you motion?
I make a motion, we know it's a closed executive session for the purposes described, and you have code annotated five dash four dash two of five parents, one parents, A, discussion of character professional competence or physical or dental health of an individual.
I'll speak in it.
All right, motion in second, all in favor? Sorry, it's you, or call, does it sound, I mean, that's okay, I can do that. Um, Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Fossett?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss, excuse for a moment, so that's four.
Yes.
So go on to a brief um, respite, like, five minutes, and those that have even